Do we have any items from the public?
Just all.
Sure, come on up. And one more time, state your name for the record for the...
My name is Hal Benjamin. I'm retired firefighter from New York City Fire Department. I spent thirty-five years under the department. And I'm very passionate about the fire department. Um, last meeting, I brought up the word nepotism, which is on the red button in Burke County, for the fire department. And what I stated was that we see it as tradition, not nepotism. And I, I came on in nineteen seventy-seven. So, being a black man in nineteen seventy-seven coming on the fire department, I don't have to say anymore. Um, but I never complained. I, I never used any kind of racist statements, so I never accepted it. But the fire department took me in there. One thing I say about the fire department is that, I hope you understand, it's a world within our world, but the difference is in the fire department, we make it work. So, I'm here just to find out, what do I need to do to present this to you, the council? Whether I need to get a petition, or how do I go about presenting this to... That's basically what I am here for today.
Okay, um, on the petition, you mean to...
To bring it...
To quantify the nepotism, or to...
Well, to bring it, forward to the public and know the people and bring it to you guys. So at least, you know, if it don't get off the book, at least you take a look at it.
Okay. It would be, it would be put on the agenda and then for something else to take a look at, to make an action on. During public comment, we just kind of listen. We don't get in too much of a dialogue, but it'd be something that we would have on a read ahead?
Mr. Wicker?
Yeah.
I believe he's speaking, we have an internal control policy that, that addresses nepotism.
Right.
It, it's a personnel issue that, I'm, I'm not sure that's something we would take input from the public.
Okay. Alrighty. Well, get with our, this is our legal director, maybe explain to him?
Yeah, I think, without getting into too much, I think, I mean, he's concerned about generationally exploited in the fire service. And I think we want to sit down and have a conversation about how fire services in this county is... The county doesn't control all of these volunteer fire departments, so we're not going to talk again. And I don't know what, we can look at our policies, which they're inside of nepotism policies. Throughout government, there's... Half the families have just come in, did two jobs here. So, I think it might be letters in discussion with some volunteer fire departments, or something to grant to the fire board.
What I spoke to them, and they actually directed me to you.
Okay.
Because our personnel policy doesn't cover there. Yeah. There, where the state might have one, I'm not very familiar with it.
We'll get a start on it.
So if you thank you.
And, because if that can, I was going to say, nobody would know any better than with Eddie Gokanour and the Brotherhood that, that is there.
Yeah, we know each other.
Yeah.
Yeah, from the fire department.
And that's what I was kind of alluding to, that Eddie and I'll talk with administrator and, you know, if there's a, if there's something that we need to do, we'll most certainly do the right thing.
Thank you very much. Just you guys taking a look at it, it's been good to me. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I gave you guys my card, let's...
Oh, okay, alright.
I'll give them...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other items from the public? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, to approve the July sixth, twenty twenty-three agenda.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. Um, purchase order law, have anything there for Tracy to comment on?
Rather, impressive purchase order law, it was two million dollars?
There sure is, almost to, what, one point nine did we call it?
Happens when you hold them up for shit.
Yeah. Yeah, impressive.
Yep. Alrighty, uh, current budget revisions, anything there? This is our new deputy county administrator, or county administrator, not deputy, former deputy. So, sorry about that, that was my, alright, give me a fupa here today and, uh...
Those who have no budget revisions this early.
Okay, can, and again, thank you, Gary, for keeping us straight and orderly, how about that? Uh, change in status. We have a change in status received from Randy Lilly, emergency services manager for Tommy Newcombe, firefighter four, and Daniel Petry, firefighter four, for step increases for thirteen years of service effective July one, twenty twenty-three, with the salary changes from seventy thousand fifty dollars to seventy-two thousand one hundred and fifty. And that's all the changes we have. Uh, approval of the minutes, everyone was present?
And Daniel Petry also.
Oh, and Daniel Petry, didn't I say that? Didn't I say Daniel? Okay, and Daniel Petry. All right, now I'm lost again. See Eddie? Uh, approval of the minutes, everyone was present. Uh, calendars, I'm here. Uh, we are here today on July the sixth, a mission meeting, county commission today. How about that, the very first one?
Okay.
Again.
Age of view all over there.
Yeah, it is.
Mr. Reminder, our July twenty-seventh meeting is moved to eight-thirty or nine-thirty.
July, okay.
July twenty-seventh, eight-thirty.
Yep, that's to do for the groundbreaking for CMC, so...
And there's a chance the governor will be here.
Yes, there will be a chance. And let's see, on July the tenth, at two-thirty PM, we have LEPC, five PM Water District, six PM Farmland Protection, six PM Airport Authority, eleven, or the, July the eleventh, two PM Central Dispatch, nine-one-one Advisory Board, uh, Wednesday the twelfth, nine-thirty AM Development Authority, one PM West Virginia First Foundation Meeting, Region Two Meeting, uh, six PM Roundhouse Authority, and six-thirty Fire Board. So, we're going to have a busy, busy Wednesday, nothing on the thirteenth or the fourteenth. Any additions or corrections to those?
Well, remember the thirteenth, uh, which is Thursday, we, there's a public area named Subdivision of News.
Yes, there is.
I assume that's about eleven and six.
Eleven and six, yep.
To be there or be squared?
Yes, indeed. Alright. Uh, approval of the agenda for, go to the consent agenda, I have a motion for that.
I'm moving that we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries, nothing for the, from the assessor here today. Board meeting reports, we're moving right along here. Mr. Boyd?
Well, um, in the last CBB meeting, there were several grants awarded. They awarded some media grants to the Dillon Farm, twenty-five hundred dollars, the haunted history tours that take place down at the Roundhouse was awarded twenty-five hundred dollars for the, uh, media grant. Apollo Theater was given a support grant of three thousand dollars. Um, there were two other grants applied for, uh, Colored Berkeley Five K had applied and, um, and they didn't meet the criteria for the grant that they've filed for. And Morgan Cabin's grant that they applied for was tabled. I think I've been asking for some more information on that. They have some spots available to attend the governor's conference in Canadian Valley, September tenth to thirteenth. Yes, that's pretty much all, I have a report there. Is this one of the people to avoid?
Uh, after the, after the meetings, I mean, after the reports. So, we'll come right back to that, just, just remind me, I don't skip over because I've been known to do that. Mr. Barnhart, anything to report on?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I did not have any regularly scheduled meetings, but Steve Catlett and I attended the wandering West Virginia Waterways, uh, meeting, which was sponsored by Region Eight, Region Nine Planning and Development Council, and Elgak, the Local Government Advisory Committee to the Chesapeake Collective Council in Berkeley Springs. We met at the Morgan Arts Council Ice House, which is a lovely, um, building, it's the old Ice House, and they've converted it into a multi-use arts facility, and very nicely done, uh, very actively working with the community, all kinds of people wandering through there, we had a, had a meeting there, and, uh, we...
So you recommended it to visit one day?
Well, it's, it's odd, uh, Berkeley Springs has very few vacant storefronts.
Really?
Um, Terrace Cafe, and then there's another building that was supposed to be a restaurant that ran into some trouble. Other than that, all the stores are occupied. Now, of course, there are artsy, craftsy, touristy places, but it was a very active downtown Berkeley Springs. I'm impressed. Um, but back to the meeting, um, we had the meeting and introduced everybody and had a little discussion. Uh, your EPA was there and that kind of stuff. And then we did a walking tour of downtown Berkeley Springs or stormwater facilities to, to deal with the flooding, you know, several years ago, uh, downtown Berkeley Springs, or Bath flooded, you know, about a foot or two... downtown Berkeley Springs, or Bath flooded, you know, about a foot or two deep and, uh, so they tried to deal with that and diverting stormwater and controlling and that sort of stuff. And then we traveled out to cemetery and looked at some things there. And, uh, very nicely done.
Very good.
And that was my.
That was it? Mr. Catlett?
Well, yeah, I was at that same thing Friday and it was a very enjoyable day. They've done a really nice job there, but, and I, I got to confirm that there's actually no town of Berkeley Springs. Berkeley Springs is not a town, it's a town of Bath.
It's a.
And I always thought there was a little town of Bath inside the town of Berkeley Springs. But, uh, when they tried, uh, apparently there was another town of Bath in West Virginia, so the mayor got screwed up. So they made, uh, Berkeley Springs coastal area, it's a coastal area in Berkeley Springs. It's not a town of Berkeley Springs, so there's no mayor of Berkeley Springs, it's a town of Bath, so.
I love that.
Because that was the most enjoyable thing I've found, after living here all my life, I never knew that, so I enjoyed that and. But they, they also are working on, added to train depot, they're restoring, a trailhead was going to be there and they're eventually going to try to get to the C N O Canal, but for now they're going to get out about two and a half miles to U S Silicon, so. I thought that was, uh, and that's something that has been talked about for a long time there, so they are pursuing that. Uh, but they deserve a lot of credit for what they've done there and, uh, it was very, very nice. Also, last Thursday evening, I had an ambulance authority meeting, business as usual. You know, they're obviously having trouble getting ambulances and all, and they've got several water. Every meeting, it seems like there's another delay added, so, uh, I hope it doesn't get to a point where it's critical, but, uh, they, they really need, uh, and then the money's all set aside and everything to pay for it because we're trying to get them here, so it's going to be interesting to see how that evolves, but, uh. And then, uh, yesterday, I had sewer board, Berka County Sewer Board, and then the Stormwater Board meetings as well. I asked Anthony how we're doing on the M O U and the, uh, permitting for the, uh, Stormwater Board. Do you have any update on that from our perspective?
A few weeks ago, the, the attorney sent the emails me, um, drafts, I commented to them back the next day, so we, um, we feel good, that's it.
Yeah. They said they were going to try to get something done in the next week or two and, uh, Greg Rowe is the head of the Stormwater Board President, asked that they move forward on that and not procrastinate, so, uh, our legal counsel was not there in attendance, so, uh, yesterday, so. And, uh, sewer board meeting was, uh, you know, business as usual as well, so. So that's, uh, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Coconut?
Yes, sir, my planning commission meeting got bumped, uh, to the seventeenth because of the holiday, so there's nothing to report there. But the other thing I like, uh, just to bring attention to, um, a long-term, long-time, uh, EMS provider, uh, and retired as chief of Berkeley EMS, Donnie Shike, uh, passed away, uh, this past week. And I'd like for us to be able to keep his family in our prayers. Uh, Karen, uh, you know, obviously was also a provider here in the county. So they've, they've given a lot to a lot of people over a long period of time, so that's, that's all.
That's all, alrighty, um, like, uh, a couple of us here, we did attend the, uh, Fourth of July celebration, Independence Day celebration out at the airport was, uh, don't have the, the numbers, but I'm sure we'll bring the Marchburg Foundation in and have them kind of give a, give us a rundown of what all took place. It was, I think it was very well attended, maybe not quite as much as last year or outside.
It wasn't, it wasn't as good as last year, but, um, I don't know, they had something going with Jefferson County at the same time, I don't know if that affected it at all. One thing I will say is, um, I think, uh, all got dropped a little bit on inviting some of the bigger company employees. They didn't even know about it. Um, Proctor Dambel didn't get a, a mass email like they did last year. There were a few of their employees that I spoke to that were like, oh, there was fireworks, last year we got an email, we didn't get an email this year. That hurts a little bit, um, so I think we need to make sure we get those emails out to those big companies and they get the blasts out to their employees. I mean, it's hard to, it's, it, it, with the way the journal and different things are these days, it's hard to get word out about events and what's going on and.
I, I think they were contacted to participate.
Maybe they dropped it.
Uh, I'm not for sure.
I know there was some sponsorship ball drop there last year, so I don't.
Yeah, I, I do know that they were, they were notified and plus all the, the Facebook posts that were, that were going on for the event and I don't know if it was.
I, I just wonder if we, we should look into, um, email blasts, um, for the area. I've done that before in my events where basically there's multimedia companies and Gary may have a way to do it within, within house to, to, um, email everybody within seventy mile range.
Geofencing.
Participate.
Yeah, we have a, we have a service that we subscribe to, uh, that's available at all the departments, so their customers, so two methods you have in play right now. If they're tied to our website, which they can sign in to create their, an account, any citizen can, and there are thousands that are in there, and if they selected for calendar updates, they instantly get the blast. But we can also initiate it, what was Swift number one, it's changed the name now, we can geofence, we can whatever, so yeah, we can.
Yeah, I think, I think that might be smart because, like I said, with the, with the decline in newspapers and different things like that, maybe direct emails might be a way to go, to get the word out.
The weather hurt, it was affecting.
Well, that, that could have been.
I mean, it, it, they said it didn't rain at the airport for more than twenty minutes or so, but it had, it had, it rained for an hour and a half from like about fifteen to seven o'clock or so.
You could, you could see it falling, yeah.
Yeah, and, um, that, that certainly has an impact on.
Yeah, if people think the weather's bad, then it won't show up.
Absolutely.
But I'll tell you, after the weather went through, the breeze came about and it turned out to be a very enjoyable evening, so. We'll do better next year.
Thank you, CMC for sponsoring.
Yes, indeed, CMC sponsorship was well, uh, well deserved, or not so, not so much well deserved, but it was well thanked.
Yes.
So they, they did a great job. And, uh, I have a feeling that the partnership with them will continue to, um, prosper in this county. There, there's not only partnership, but a friendship that were also made out there, so. And thanks to all those who attended. And now, board appointments.
Okay, so I think we're finally ready to, uh, fill this board for the museum.
Okay.
Um, you know, we've done several interviews, um, more, more interviews than we have spots and I think got a breakdown here in, uh, some appointments, and so with that being said, we'll go ahead and start with the, um, with the three-year appointments, there, with, with these positions, there are three three-year appointments, three two-year appointments and three one-year appointments. So with the three-year appointments, um, we got Carol Appenzeller, uh, Jody Williams Price and Keith Hammerslay, that's the three, three years. Don Silvis, Richard Trenary and Helen Harris on the two-year appointments. Don Silvis, so Richard Trenary and Helen Harris on the two-year appointments. Then Matthew Howard, Robert Mahaffey and Ron Good on the one-year appointments. And that would make up our nine-member board to start and get this ball rolling on, uh, getting that, getting that, um, bylaws and everything put together for the museum board. You know, there were a couple of people that, that did apply that, that we left out, everybody we, I think were good, uh, candidates, but, you know, we got to figure out who's the best fit at the time and, uh, I think these were the best ones.
Okay. So I have a motion to appoint those nine members to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, they are the board.
And now, in the future, you're going to have to make sure that anybody that's appointed in the future then will be all, all be three-year appointments.
Correct. This is, this is initial.
So three, three people will come up either.
Staggering, yeah.
Yeah, so they're staggering. But we had that issue with the senior board, uh, you know, it was one and two and three and then people were confused and.
Yeah, this is just because it's an initial.
You get past the initial thing.
Initial walk-in.
Yeah.
That way everybody doesn't go out at the same time.
Right, right, so the initial bylaws would just be three-year appointments on the.
Yes, sir, a, a county commission, how does county commission fit in?
Um, I, I'm.
As a liaison?
I'm a liaison, I, I, I mean, I had some interest from someone else who'd like to be a second liaison, that was something that I guess we just need consensus on, is that correct?
Yeah, because we're not a voting member.
Right, because we're not a voting member, but, you know, there are a few boards that there's two. I think it's something in state bylaws, thank you.
I'll have to look at the legal board on that.
Maybe I was explaining to a board. I don't, I, I'll have to check for that, I don't think there's any limitation on having a council member. Okay. Sit on board today. Yeah, I would.
I mean, we own the building.
Yeah.
Absolutely, and I, I think we should, if they're able to, I think we should be a voting member. In fact, I, I think it's, I, I've brought this up in conversation, there should be two councils and people on there perhaps, and then you have eleven, so that's interesting.
Well, right now I do know that that is set by legislation of nine-member board. There's, there's some stuff that has to be done to make it eleven, I did ask about that.
So if the intent is that the designated be a voting member, you probably shouldn't appoint nine, you're, there's no way. You just filled it, so you wouldn't be able to vote for a year.
At least a year, yeah.
In fact, if the intent is, is that one of you are going to.
But I hope that the people that we did appoint are the right people and that they make the decisions the right way, but. I mean, even if we had two of us on there, I don't, you know, I don't know if that'd make a difference at this point anyway.
I guess, my, my guess, my point is if you want to have a, if the council, commission party wants to have a voting seat, you just fill it, so you can't.
Can't vote for another year.
You can't be involved in the voting of the design of the bylaws.
Right.
Yeah, these are open meetings, so anybody can attend.
You can't, you just want to vote.
Alright.
Okay. Keep that. Anthony, if you could, uh, let us know in the near future?
So, yeah, let's check out what has to be done to be able to take us to an eleven board member also to get us there.
But until we get an answer, why would we approve it? I mean, it's not like it's got to be done today, hopefully we wait and get the answer on that.
Uh, we can resend the motion. Is that correct, Anthony?
You can put that in place for another, but.
It's certainly.
Anthony, if they want to quantify the process, they need to, they want to go back and not appoint the board right now, want them to take help.
So, yeah, take a motion to.
Resend the motion.
So are you saying there's a state to get your following?
Well, one of the nine-member board.
Yeah. You can remember, you can, you can remove anybody from the board at any time, so I mean.
I'd rather not do that.
Remove them and address them next week.
Yeah.
You didn't appoint them.
Recommendation.
Motion to resend the, the initial appointments, yes, until, until we get this resolved.
Sounds good.
Second.
Motion and a second, and we'll revisit it very near soon, in the very near future. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, that motion carries, so sorry about that, we'll take care of it. Alrighty.
Yeah, there's no objection to the people, it's just an objection to the process.
Process, yeah. Alrighty, uh, commissioner issues, um, Commissioner Catlett about the approval of additional allocation for parks and rec? That the Rooney, uh, capital improvements at Rooney Park?
Something we've discussed previous months and it's good that I was, we were asked to wait till they get official after the start of the new fiscal year. And it would be in addition to parks and rec budget under capital improvements for county parks. And it would be seventy-five thousand designated specifically for Rooney Park. And at the time, we were talking about taking that out of coal severance. And I assume that's where we still want to do that, but, uh.
Is that the total cost of the, the playground equipment has been ordered for there and, um, and it, it comes out to like seventy-five, four hundred and some dollars, so money basically and, um, then they would just, after they've purchased the equipment and installed it, they'll send invoices to the county for reimbursement like they would on the other capital improvements money that they, we have budgeted for this fiscal year.
Okay.
Uh, if, uh, you're.
Is that your motion?
A motion for that, I'd like to make that motion, that we.
Well, we'll get a motion in a second, we'll have further discussion then, how's that?
That we budget seventy-five thousand dollars for capital improvements for parks and rec for this fiscal year with the designation of Rooney Park as the recipient of this funds.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So there won't be any additional monies available to, uh, do the other sign, the other side of the sign, not in this one and then.
Okay.
It's all going to be spent on playground equipment.
Got you.
Okay, what, what is the playground?
What is it?
Yeah.
There's going to be a, uh, multiple unit, it's going to be placed up near the pavilion and then there's going to be a double swing set, uh, instance, installation as well, so.
And the parks and rec will, some will.
Well, they're having people do that.
Yeah.
Contracted to be put up and do it, and back to groundwork, already been done for the pan for it and what have you, so.
Okay. Any further?
Well, the other thing to that is, is there's, there's a lot of folks have come together, uh, Steve has helped with those efforts out there, but, you know, getting Parks and Rec together, getting, uh, uh, the, uh, the Little League, the Little League has really taken an active role in, uh, fundraising and stuff like that to get, get that park squared away where it's really usable for them and nice for their families to go there while other kids are playing ball, other kids can be doing other, you know, enjoyable activities, so there's.
Yeah, there's a travel team that actually uses, so they raised, they raised over forty thousand dollars of their native money and they really taken it one field and upgraded it to a really high level, um, so the community is involved. There's an Eagle Scout project that's going to be involved, that park system's cut in trails up in the wooded area at Rooney Park and there's a little run that goes at the bottom of the trail and so the Eagle Scouts building, you walk across the bridge, you get across it. And, uh, so that the whole community, the Virgin Club's very involved, uh, as well. Uh, so the community has, uh, really got behind this improvement of this facility and I'm hoping that, uh, we can invest some money into it for the next several years to utilize the entire property, you know, up until now, the only two, uh, well, except for the small pavilion or two ball fields, but there's seventeen acres there and the trails, uh, that could be potentially a little, uh, fishing pond built there, uh, and, um, you know, as far as that end of the county, that's the only show in town as far as a public park, so.
Yeah, that, that'll really enhance.
It will, and it's, like I say, the community's bought into it, so, um, the fields, uh, got used to death this year, uh, Little League and tribal ball. And it's, uh, it's a good thing for that end of the, the county, um. So, you know, during the COVID funding that was distributed, uh, most, there, there was, there was, there weren't any COVID funds distributed to that end of the county and they feel like they were kind of neglected in a sense, and so this is, uh, is, uh, addressing that concern and I think it would be valuable, valuable improvement, so.
Alright, any further discussion?
I appreciate your support on that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries, and that will be coal severance. Will Lawrenson, fiduciary supervisor. Will Lawrence, fiduciary supervisor, state monthly, uh, month of July, and state hearings to be scheduled.
That's correct. Good morning, or commission, I'm sorry.
Yeah, get it right.
That's right.
We'll get it right here.
It does sound better. It does. This morning, I have twenty-six estates for final or interim settlement approval. All estates are identical to those found in your read ahead. Only the estate of Rosalie Wood is deemed for interim settlement and all the rest are approval for final settlement. The only distinction here being that an interim settlement allows for an estate to remain open, distribute the assets as designated into the interim settlements, and continue conducting further estate business. Final settlement, as most of these are here today, settles an estate and orders the release of all assets, all remaining assets of the estate as prescribed by law, and all duties be released on behalf of fiduciaries. All estates named herein have been published in the Martinsburg Journal newspaper as prescribed by law. Further, all estates, all estate interested parties have been given legal or actual notice of these estates pending settlement approval status. And with that, I ask that this commission accept the twenty-six estates as listed in your read ahead for the final or interim approval for the month of July twenty twenty-three.
Mr. President, I hereby move to accept the settlement list, twenty-six estates on the settlement list for approval.
Have a motion or have a second?
Second.
Okay, two seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. And anything to, um, to schedule?
Not anything for scheduling at this point.
Okay. There you go. Next up, fiduciary supervisor on the estate of Helen Brill.
Yes, commissioners, we do have an estate, several estate hearings this morning. First, the estate of Helen Brill, whose petition involves approbate of a copy of a will in solemn form. Ms. Brill passed away March nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, a resident of Berkeley County, West Virginia. The decedent's purported copy of her last will and testament dated June twentieth, twenty eleven, was presented to my office on May ninth, twenty twenty-three, and meets all the necessary requirements for a valid holographic will, bequeathing assets to her children, grandchildren, and several charities at cer- at certain special requests. The will is then signed and dated. The will then seemingly has a holographic codicil bequeathing assets to two more granddaughters specifically. To date, no parties have filed written objections to Mr. Coxwell's petition probate this will in solemn form. And without objection from any party regarding the Brill estate, I ask for this council's, or this commission's consideration to probate a copy of the holographic will for the estate of Helen Brill.
Okay, you have the information. Do we have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Motion to accept the, the recommendation to accept the will of Helen Brill in solemn form.
Have a motion or have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries.
And for the commission's own sake, I'll, I'll prepare some orders for sign, signature later for this business. Next, we have the estate of Irene C. Smith. Ms. Smith died on September tenth, twenty twenty, a resident of Berkeley County, West Virginia. On November twentieth, twenty twenty, Anita F. Thompson, daughter of the decedent, and Tasha L. Greenfield, granddaughter of the decedent and petitioner in this case, qualified as named co-executrixes of the estate. Indeed, this estate is two years, seven months, and sixteen days old. More than the prescribed ninety days later, the co-executors filed their appraisement for the estate on June fourth, twenty twenty-one, listing only thirty-five thousand dollars in probate real estate. The estate published on July seventh, twenty twenty-one, making the claim deadline September fifth, twenty twenty-one. No claims of debt were officially filed through my office during that time. There are no claims of debt on file. On March first, twenty twenty-two, my office sent out a letter reminding each co-executor that a settlement interim or final was needed to be filed as soon as possible. On April eighth, twenty twenty-two, only Ms. Greenfield responded, stating that a complication with the chain of title for the probate real estate had come up, the chain of title was imperfect, and that more time would be needed to settle the estate while trying to correct the issue with the help of the law offices in Pill and Pill. On May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, Ms. Greenfield petitioned to be removed from her role as fiduciary of this estate. As this commission will note from your read ahead, this petition is in your read ahead, she actually calls it a renunciation. However, one cannot simply renounce their fiduciary duties once sworn. Indeed, one must seek leave from this body and file an interim settlement to the satisfaction of all beneficiaries in order to be released from their duties. According to Ms. Greenfield's petition, the clarification of title for the sole real estate asset at issue has made the quote "situation more complex and laborious," unquote. Thus, she seeks to be removed as co-executrix. I ask any party present here today, speak if they so desire. With that, this commission, I ask this commission to consider allowing Ms. Tasha L. Greenfield to be removed as co-executrix for the estate of Irene Catherine, Catherine Smith, pending completion and approval of an interim settlement of the counts.
Okay, you heard the recommendation of the fiduciary office. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir, I make the motion that we remove Tasha Greenfield as a co-executor of the Catherine Smith estate.
Have a motion or have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner. Finally, we have the estate of Norman Irving Gerber. Mr. Gerber passed away May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, a resident of Berkeley County, West Virginia. On June second, twenty twenty-three, Paul K. Murray, friend of the decedent, sole beneficiary, named executor and petitioner in this case, presented the original yet unproven reported last will of the decedent dated October thirty-first, two thousand six. The will was prepared by a Sinclair, Sinclair, excuse me, Prosser Law LLC out of Annapolis, Maryland. My office typically has difficulties with wills professionally prepared in Maryland for the simple fact that Maryland has a register of wills, thus negating the need for a will to self-prove. Kind of getting into the weeds a little bit, but people seeking to record their wills in Maryland can do so while they're still alive, making the need to prove a will's validity, validity superfluous. They're the ones handing it to you, saying, this is my will. In West Virginia, that is not so. The will does not self-prove, thus we now seek this commission's leave to accept, accept this perfectly valid on its face last will and testament irrespective of the will's not self-proving. Typically, my office requires the completion of what are called witness depositions. Basically, what you do is you track down witnesses who signed onto a will, and you have them attest. You say, I watched this testator sign this piece of paper, they were of sound mind, they weren't under any undue influence, and we all signed at the same time. Well, anyway, the date and location of the will's completion, in this case, make tracking witnesses down virtually impossible. After all, West Virginia law specifically states that, quote, "No attestation shall be required," unquote, for a will to be valid in West Virginia. It's not required, it's simply something we'd like to do to verify that this indeed is a person's giving away their stuff, as this person can't speak for themselves anymore. No objections to this will's probation has been received by my office to this date, and I invite any party here to add to the movement. I now ask for this commission's consideration in allowing this non-proven, non-proven will of non-Irving Gerber into probate in solemn form.
Okay, you heard the recommendation from fiduciary to accept the will and.
And in solemn form.
In solemn form, I'm sorry. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir, so moved.
Uh, do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, I take care of business.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Alrighty, we're a little bit early, but we'll go ahead and take a break. Oh, I'm sorry, hold on.
I, if we wanted to discuss the museum commission a little more.
Sure, come on up.
The statute does not have any limitations on council commissioners, county commissioners being members. And it requires order being between five and ten members. The order that this body entered had in there that county commissions and municipalities, including Berkeley County, may have a non-voting representative. That was the limitation, and I think that's where it came from. So it was what was entered here. The idea being it, being a regional building or museum commission, so. That, if you want to change, you have to go back on the agenda, get that changed, where you just have it on voting representative on there. It still leaves all voting, all appointment authority with the Berkeley County Commission. Of course, you can remove people who want to replace, so the control.
So they'd be an authority or a board or what? What, under state code, would they be an authority, a board, or what?
It's, it's some legislation back in the seventies of the building or, I mean, museum commission.
Museum commission, yes. But the county would retain the ownership of all the property?
Well, yes.
And.
There wouldn't be any reason for the county to.
But they, they, they could create their, they'll have their own budget then, they'll create their own budget, their own staff if they choose to.
They don't have any taxing authority or anything like that, so they can't really raise their own funds other than through private donations or through user fees of the museum, that sort of thing. I, I would imagine that once the museum board is established, that it will go out and ask for assistance from private individuals, local governments, ask stuff to be donated, and they'll have to figure all of that out.
There are the grants and the plots. Yeah, and I think it's going to be very similar then to Parks and Rec where, because of that, this particular park board in this county's under chapter seven, I mean, chapter ten instead of chapter seven, because it's multiple entities, they don't own any of the property. If it's in the county, the county owns it, it's in the city, the city owns it. But they do have the ability to generate their own revenue, apply for grants, and so they'll be a separate entity from us totally, so.
We do own the building, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And have a significant amount of expense wrapped up.
Right, right. I just thought that since we do, it, it, since we do own the building and have a lot of expense in it, and are probably going to have a lot of future expenses in it, it seems like to me that the voting power should, we should have some kind of voting power on this board, body. I mean, it's just, it's just my thoughts.
That would have to be put back up on the agenda for a report back.
And like I say, I'm, with the nine people that's recommended, it's fine. I'm just saying that it seems like we ought to have a little bit more skin in the game in cloud. If we're going to, because we're, I mean, honestly, the, a lot of that money's going to be generated through here.
We're also looking to, to speak to the state, as there's not anything besides Harper's Ferry up here that is state-funded. So we are inquiring about state funding of the regional museum.
They confuse it in Harper's Ferry, because it's federally funded.
So, so the state, the, the state has its museum in Charleston, it has the mound in Moundville, there's nothing in this region.
Okay.
Yeah, but regional. So we were going to look at the state for some additional funding for this project, as in staff and some other things of that nature. So that is something that's being looked into, to where all the weight isn't on us to carry it.
And that board will certainly go out and find funding wherever it is. But as of today.
Well, you just said that it could go up to ten members.
Yeah.
And couldn't we?
We, we could, but that part you had a gridlock.
One of us be the tenth member and be a voting member?
If you modify the.
Modify the order.
Establish it. So you have to put that back up on the agenda.
Mr. President, I don't know if it's a.
Put it back. Yeah, we'll just leave the table, come back with a.
Modified.
Modified order, yeah. Sounds good. All right, we'll revisit it again. Alrighty.
Revisit it again?
Again. One more, one more time. All right, so anything else? Want to go on break here for a little bit? Be back here ten forty-five.
Okay, we're back in session and we have Tracy Gilliams with Grants Administrator, acceptance of the West Virginia Justice Reinvestment Grant.
Morning.
Good morning.
This award also comes for resolution of acceptance. It is for the West Virginia Justice and Community Services for the D. R. Park Center. It begins July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. The total award amount is $140,908. This is the sixth year of funding for the award and it will provide peer recovery coaches to individuals 18 years or older who have been convicted of a felony coupled with the need for substance use treatment. It will currently pay for a partial salary for one full-time community engagement specialist at $45,000, two peer recovery coaches at partial salary at $35,000 each, and one peer recovery coach partial salary at $25,908. The balance of the salary entrenches into what locally.
Has this been applied for?
Mm-hmm. That's been awarded.
Oh, okay.
All right.
And what do you need, a resolution?
Motion to accept the grant and a motion to adopt the resolution.
Two separate motions.
Two separate motions. Can we do it in one? We'll do two.
Well, the first one is for what?
To accept the grant.
So who?
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
There's a double motion.
Two seconds.
Yeah.
When we're done. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Let's see, motion to adopt the resolution.
So who?
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Only one.
I put a delay on that. I'm gonna start going third.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carried. All righty, thank you so much, Tracy. And now we have a Boarding Commission interview with Ms. Becky Lynn. Come on up. Good to see you.
Good to see you guys.
Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the Senior Services Board.
Well, I'm a senior community member of the D. R. Park Center. I just retired last year from City National. I'm currently working as community engagement on a support-based system. I was just talking to Steve about when you retire and you've done stuff all your life and then you stop community and rapidly, really, I didn't want to hurt my mental health because I heard, I've talked to so many people about it and I thought I just have to stay engaged and have a purpose in life. So I've been doing that. My lady that took over, I consult with her, as you know, you work on the whole jail. We started a bank there 30 years ago and so that ended my career when we sold it to you guys. We went back to where it belonged in the county, so that was good. And so I just, I love, I love working in the community and I think one of the things I'm so close to people, and I'm a senior citizen now, by the way, which we were talking, now you can be a senior citizen at 50, I think, but anyway, I'm closer than I, I'm closer than I'd like to think. But my father was 47 when I was born and so he was a baby and I was around senior citizens all my life. And I watched, my mother took care of everyone and I watched other people that didn't have family. So I think the senior center is so important for people. Actually, my sister was 17 when I was born, she's 85, she goes there. So, and also people who have income, that may be the only people they see every day or a good meal. So there's so much need in the community and I think that part of life, I think those people given their life are, you know, to work with all their life needs and happiness and especially people who love income. So that's why I was asked about one of my classmates, Richard Dennis, he's on the board. So I thought about it a lot, but you know, I think it would be fun. I talked to Amy and she said she needs fundraisers, who I've fundraised all my life, so I think I can contribute to it.
Well, we're gonna start with H.D.
Well, really, I don't have any questions as a comment. I think you would be great there. You sound like you're interested to do it and you have plenty of time to help, so. Yeah, my love.
I have issue with your references.
She knows.
Gee, good.
I thought about that too.
Well, I had others. If they don't, if they're not good, I'll give you others.
Well, I'm.
I just thought, I've named Jeff and ours all my life.
Dropping names, that's what I said.
See, if mine was on there, I'd be dropped kick.
Do you have, do you have any idea what you would like to do as a member of the Senior Services Board? Is there any changes or improvements or anything like that you have?
I mean, I think, I've talked about Colin, I ran into him one day and he, I think he's stepping off, his term is up, but I think it's well-run operation. I don't think there's any changes. The only thing Amy said is that, I know I've been involved in, actually, I participated in one of the fundraisers years ago, it was a play and you had to go and you didn't get to practice for the play, you just got to dress up and it was just like a comedy and it was so much fun and they raised money and those things are gone. I know there used to be bring your bowl and get soup and different things. So Amy just said that that's where she felt that we could, they could use help. And of course, I've done that all my life, so that's what, that's what I'm trying to do.
Well, one thing, and I've tried to coordinate a one before and I didn't get anywhere, the Senior Services Center, then you have Meals on Wheels and all these other agencies that service the, I don't want to use the word term elderly, but you know.
I understand.
I'd like to see more cooperation between them because, you know, you have the elderly and they don't know maybe what Senior Services offers, they may know what Meals on Wheels offers because Meals on Wheels basically comes to you.
Right.
But, you know, that's a wish I had.
Having been involved in agencies, and I'm a big parent, we were, I was involved in the night away when it merged with Jefferson County because it's so much more efficient and you don't need executive directors, you don't need the staff and so you can do a lot more. So I understand all that. I do find as we went through processes and processes and processes, there are Turk wars, they don't want you to mess with what they've done for 30 years and so to get through that is difficult. But my mother-in-law's 92 and we just recently started her own Meals on Wheels and I just got a letter yesterday because I pay her bills and it said their capacity and they can't take anybody on and so my growth is so.
Well, the reason they can't take anybody on is they need drivers because the roots are getting so big that they need, they need more drivers. They got the capacity to serve them.
They just don't have the people.
They don't have the capacity to get the food from their.
Kitchen.
Kitchen.
Kitchen. I understand. Well, it's a big commitment. We thought, my husband and I moved July, we were going to pick back in. So my husband said, we gotta take mom something because she doesn't like to go out much and we were gonna make her a plate and take over and she called and said they had delivered on her horse last. So what dedication to the people to volunteer to give up their, everybody wants to do the good job activities and so, yeah, I mean, and it's a big commitment for people to do that and of course, the population's just, just going crazy here and there's just not enough people to take care of everything. Half this everywhere, it's a pharmacy when you get there, everything is full.
My wife's very active in Meals on Wheels, I tell you.
I mean, it's a wonderful service. Back in, I'm, my mom, before she passed in Miami, she lived on Queen Street and I was at the point that I used to take her lunch from the bank and I couldn't do it anymore, I just insisted. And there's just so many things that people don't realize and that's one of the things is near and dear in my heart because I know what it did for the family when, when you can, when you can have these services provided and a lot of people can afford it and just unfortunately, I mean, I worked at a bank for 50 years between Old National and City and I would answer your phone and people would call like a week before the social security and they'll say, what is in your account? And I'll say, it's $10.50. I have that much left and they're happy. And so people don't understand that part in what people go through. So I'm a big, I have a lot of passion for that because that's what I said I did, that I was around them all my life. When I was seven, everybody was 65 and up, so.
Well, what I'm getting at is Meals on Wheels needs drivers.
Hey, question to you, comment, if you don't mind. You said some participation between the two, is that for acknowledgement that the senior, what the senior center has to offer? Could you put flyers on the food that's delivered by Meals on Wheels of the events that are going on at the senior center? Would that be something that would help?
Well, senior center also delivers meals, I think only in the city of Martin.
City of Martin.
Meals on Wheels delivers everywhere in Berkeley County.
We went through a tour just about, I don't know, back in the spring and we had the drivers. I was amazed at where they went. I had no idea they did that.
If it's in Berkeley County, they'll do that, but yeah, there just aren't enough of them.
The only thing we've done in the past is have each person, I think Diane was the head of Meals, have each person meet and talk about working together collectively and it's just, it's just like the city and county working together. It's so much more efficient when you do it together versus separately because it's efficiency. But it's again, I've dealt with this, it was a, it was a really a miracle to get Jefferson County to collapse the United Way to get my new plan and it's so much better, you know, it just saves money all the way to hand. But I believe in it, but I don't know how, I'm not saying I can do it, but how it helps.
I just bring it up.
And it's, it's talked about all the time.
Steve. A cook at the senior center drives from Whartonville every day to here and she's phenomenal. She says her food's better than Meals on Wheels. What I'm gonna say is, I've asked that same question internally since I've been on.
My wife works in the kitchen at Meals on Wheels, so.
But I've asked that and they are cooperating together and all and they converse and stuff. And it seems like, I think a lot of people thinks it's all in the house in one organization anyway, but it's not obviously, but it may come to that at some point. But more important than the meal though, that they serve, is the camaraderie because some of those people, that's the only person they talk to for a whole week, is that person that brings that meal to their house. And that is more important than food itself in many cases and that's what, so getting more volunteers is the key and it is with the senior center too. But as I said last week about our interview, I don't know of anybody better to serve on the senior board than Becky Lynn. I've got the utmost respect for her, she's awesome and has been in Berkeley County and she's a hero in this county in my mind.
And everybody, we're all doing together. Thanks a billion, I say.
You've been a leader though, Becky, and we appreciate it and if you, I think you'd be a great asset to this board.
Eddie.
I've already, we've already had our interview. We picnicked together the other day.
You interrogated me over a hamburger.
No, I tell you, with your banking business that, you know, 50 years that you bring before and as a leader within your organization and then your compassion that you have for people, they're very lucky that you were able to volunteer for them. So thank you, you're top-notch. Thank you.
I would ask this, what is the term?
Three years.
Three years.
Is there an opening now or?
Yes, two actually.
So, Becky, I don't have anything to say, thank you.
Make a motion.
It's up to you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we add Becky Lynn as a member of the senior services board.
Second motion. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Welcome aboard.
Thank you all for working today and thank you, this county is, I'm so proud of it and I see certain changes and good things and growth is obviously amazing, but you all do a great job and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Because what you all do is very important and a lot of people, I could never do it, I always said, because, you know, sometimes you place 10 people and 20 people a man, but you just got, somebody has to do it and thank you all for doing it because our county, I'm very proud of where we live. I would never live anywhere else. What you do is important, thank you.
I love it here too and also like to go visit.
You'll get a letter, take the letter to the county clerk.
Tony.
Tony Petrucci and he'll swear you in.
Well, he usually swears at us, but he'll swear you in.
Well, he may swear.
This is better than a firing squad.
Thank you, Becky. All righty, let's see here. Yep, that's it today. Any items from the public? In my possible executive session? Nope, we're good to go. Anybody have anything for, anything for the good of the order? Penny? H.D.? Jim? Eddie? B. Gary? Jeff? No? Man, okay.
Mr. President, I'm reading recently.
We are in recess.